All right. Thank you to all in attendance today for our board study session. Ms. Gladhill, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Awesome. Thank you for phoning in. Tonight's study session will be regarding the levy, and we'll go through some different presentation and stuff. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Hanson.
Me first, that's okay. So this, the presentation that we're putting together for the board will allow us to look at basically our current situation, situation as far as where we are now relative to our rate, or ask what programs are embedded with this, and most specifically how the state enters into the conversation as far as the funding. So Dr. Brilhart is going to go through all of those pieces. I hope that it gives you enough depth, and that we'll be able to answer questions as we move forward to set the resolution, which is will be coming up in our November meeting. So thank you.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, I'm gonna probably keep pointing at this screen just as a reference, so I've got my little clicker here. So again, thank you for the opportunity. So tonight is our more in-depth of our upcoming February 10th EPNO levy. And one of the things that I will highlight later in the presentation, you'll notice kind of a different title for what was once our tech levy. Now, we're going to title our tech safety levy, which again, I'll get to that in a little bit. So again, as Mr. Hanson alluded to, some of the items that we're going to discuss is, you know, those proverbial buckets of what we try to accomplish with our EPNO, and also our tech levy. But everything circles back to our mission and vision, and again, kind of recounting what we try to focus on with that. Obviously, the word "safety" comes out. We want to make sure students are well-known. Again, they're operating in a safe environment, and of course, their highest potential is going to be reached while they're in our possession, you know, for that eight hours per day. So just to kind of get us off to the launchpad, this is where we're currently at today. So one of the things I do want to mention, which does get kind of confusing for taxpayers and whatnot, is this thing versus a budget year versus a fiscal year. So just for simplicity, the last two numbers in a budget year for county purposes accounts for the fiscal year. So we are currently in fiscal year 2026, but budget year 2526. So I just want to make sure I pointed that out for reference, just to cause less confusion for possible future explanation. So our budget year, of course, the board did pass our budget back in June of expected expenditures to be about $339 million. And so what I did on this graph, I tried to break it out, Mr. Hanson and I were discussing, to kind of break it out into categories for our state and other revenue, but then also our federal revenues as well, because I mean, needless to say, that's an item that is of concern across the country, is, you know, potential lower revenues coming in for, you know, whether it be sped, or it be title or whatnot. And so I'll highlight that later in the presentation. But our total state, fed, and other grant revenues total about $288 million. And then that funding gap, if you just take simple subtraction from that to that, that funding gap sits at about $50.8 million. And of course, we did approve our current last year EPNO. We're sitting at $24.7, and then our LEA is expected to be about $15.5. And of course, our tech levy is sitting at $5 million for this year. So in total, and again, I'll reference this later in the presentation, our total tech plus LEA plus EPNO is about $44.7. But as you remember, we still budgeted and expect to have about a negative $8 million budget deficit by the end of this budget year come August of 2026. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. So what do levies support, of course, categorically, and we'll go through these buckets, student learning, health and safety, instructional support, athletics and activities, operations and maintenance, and tech safety. And again, as I alluded to a few months ago when we were presenting on this, the long and the short of it is our levy support anything that the basic prototypical school funding model does not. And so in short, we try to categorize these items that again, go above and beyond the prototypical school funding model. So with student learning, that has everything to do with IB classes, whether it be advanced placement classes, special ed support, dual language enhancements, also librarians. And as we've had a discussion before with the board, there's different categorical positions that, you know, we're funded at a limited level per our school size, and again, per what the state funds us. And so, you know, it's hard when you're trying to, when you're trying to staff a building, the state provides you a .7 counselor, for instance, but you need a 1.0 counselor. Well, that .3 comes from local funds, of course. Health and safety, needless to say, our very successful school resource officer program of both our middle schools and high schools is funded through EPNO. Also, our school safety officers, they're all our elementaries. And of course, we are fully staffed. They're all of our elementaries with 17 total. Security staff as well, our school nurses, school psychs, drug and alcohol prevention, and then also our crosswalk safety. And then instructional support, of course, this has anything to do, again, above and beyond what the prototypical school funding model funds us at, with paraeducators, with different secretarial positions, and really just kind of holistically any classified position that may fall within that category outside of a certificated employee. Athletics and activities, of course, this does include extracurricular and also co-curricular as well. Again, we do not receive any funding to, you know, fund a sport, or dance, or drama clubs, or whatnot, anything, you know, basically post-three o'clock. We do not receive any funding for that within the prototypical school funding model. So of course, that money has to come from somewhere, and of course, those are local funds. Operations and maintenance, again, just like I pointed out to you earlier, we only receive so much funding, so much FTE per classified positions within operations and maintenance. So again, if we only receive funding for two and a half custodians, but we have enough square footage to support three, again, that .5 FT is going to come from local funds as well. And then, of course, again, technology, which again, we added the word "safety" here, which again, I'll get to here in a little bit. Obviously, technology costs, enhancements continually rise, as we know, most items, computers, servers, whatnot, they have a life cycle, and we have to be cognizant of that, and we have to make sure that we are providing the best equipment for our kids to be most successful. But of course, that, again, we don't receive full funding for that from the state. So again, those come from local funds as well. So what I tried to do here was, I'm going to have a couple different slides, and I'll slow down and explain this thoroughly, or we can wrap it up at the very end. So what I wanted to try to do was show you a comparison to if we just tried to maintain what we currently have right now, and just put a simple escalator of a 3% increase in not only expenditures, but also a 3% increase in revenues as well, with those three categorical items, with tech, with LEA, and then also our EPNO. I wanted to show you how that funding gap just compounds and just grows, and it's just not a sustainable model. So as you can tell, again, I'm not going to go through this bucket by bucket, but just for simple math, again, this is where that bucket is currently right now, with student and learning, same thing with health and safety, instructional support, athletic activities, operations and maintenance, and technology. So again, just to do simple math, just basically taking everything and adding 3% consequently throughout the next four years, what you'll see is even with our expected outside local fund revenues, with those additional expenses that are outside local expenses as well, what you'll see is that that funding gap just continually increases, hence our deficit spending continually increases as well. And basically, what this just shows you, and again, it is literally just a simple math problem, that unfortunately, if we want to even sustain what we currently have right now, doing a simple 3% escalator just simply isn't mathematically enough, if we want to sustain that. So, and again, it's mainly due to the fact that, again, what we're, and this is assuming enrollment is flat, okay? And this is assuming we don't add staff either. This is just current expenditures, just again, adding those at 3%. That's it. But again, as you see, although that sum does increase, so does the negative sum of what we're short every single year. So this next slide, this is just a simple graph, again, just to kind of highlight that. So as you can see, this blue line indicates that funding gap, if we were to do that 3% modest increase, that funding gap starts at right around about $50 million, from what, again, what we're getting from the state versus what our local funds have to support. It starts at about $50 million, but four years later, you're sitting somewhere in the ballpark of almost $70 million for that funding gap. So again, if we're asking our local taxpayers to help support that gap, again, at a modest level of only 3%, it's unfortunately, what you see year to year, again, that gap just continually grows and grows and grows. Okay? And again, that's that, and this line down here just indicates that 9 to $22 million shortfall. Okay? All right. So what we are considering and what we are presenting tonight is a plan to help that shortfall that we feel like not only meets our current needs and sustains our current needs, but also offers enhancements for our schools, helps us meet needs for our kids, and helps us meet expectations from our community. That really ultimately does also accomplish all that, but then also helps protect the individual taxpayer as well. So I'm going to run through this line by line, category by category. It's a lot of numbers, so please don't tell me to slow down and re-explain, by all means. So again, kind of, this is where we were last year. Here's where we are this year. Again, those are exactly the same numbers as the previous slide showed. So one other thing that I did add on this slide, because again, this is something that a lot of people don't focus on when you're talking about EPNO and LEA and tech levies, or safety levies, or whatever, is your debt service. So as a taxpayer, you're going to pay state one, state two tax, which of course goes to Olympia. We are not in control of that. That is the same rate that they established across the entire state, but we're not in control of that. I think currently, right now, it's set at $2.20, I think, roughly. And that's the same around the state. Okay? So they just generate that from every single parcel in the state, and that's how much money goes to Olympia. And then, of course, it eventually comes back to us and state funds. So you got that. Of course, you have your EPNO, and then also you have your tech levy. So what we tried to be cognizant of is knowing that, okay, back in fiscal year '25, our debt service amount that we had to collect in order to meet our debt obligation was $19.1. Now, if you remember, of course, we refinanced a bond last year, which did save us $3.6 million, I believe, over the course of the duration of the remainder of life of that bond. So because of that, and we also had other debt falling off, the local taxpayer is going to notice that last year, their tax rate was $3.03, but this year, it's going to be $2.65, which is great. That's great. So what we tried to devise was a funding plan that, again, could bring us sustainability, but then also get us back to that range in totality for our local taxpayers to be sitting right at about that $3 range with our EPNO, with our tech safety levy, and then also with our known debt service as of today. Okay? So again, that's kind of the guiding light, if you will. So one thing that you'll notice is, yes, the individual tax rates for EPNO and our tech safety levy consequently do go up because the sums go up, because of course, we're trying to levy more dollars off the parcels that we have. But the one thing I do want to point out, so in fiscal year '27, we are estimating about a 4% increase in AV. In fiscal year '28, we're estimating about a 5%, and then also the same thing in '29. The reason for that is because the grand majority of our most expensive parcels in our district get reassessed up to market value in '28 and also in '29. Okay? That is about 40% and about 40% of our parcels. The remaining 20% of our parcels, mainly ag, will get reassessed up to market value in 2030. Okay? So that's why we're being a little bit more aggressive in these two years, because it kind of mathematically makes sense.
And you know it'll go down in 2030?
Yeah, mainly because most of those parcels just don't have as much value. So in totality, the AV should, in theory, should level off. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because usually, farmland doesn't go up as much as like an individual residential home, usually, historically. So again, I wanted to make sure that, again, we did point that out. And then also, we did just get our second preliminary AV projection from the assessor's office. So that number was plugged in to kind of obviously be our baseline for all of this. So that may change a little bit, but I wouldn't expect it to change that much. So from the first preliminary to the second, there was a difference of like $60,000. It wasn't, it was very insignificant. So, but anyways, so if we increase our EPNO to a sum of $29.5, and then consequently go up about 3% to 5% categorically for each one of these columns, and then, one of the biggest things that you notice difference of is our tech levy. So what we would propose is we, instead of identifying it as a tech-only levy, we would identify it as a tech safety levy. So what that would look like is we would still kind of quasi-box in the tech components within that same levy. So that would not change. So Eric will be able to replace computers and servers or whatnot, so that'll still continue. It's just anything above and beyond that almost like $5 million, maybe $5.5, maybe $6 million tech allowance, if you will, within that, would then be allocated towards safety enhancements. Okay? Most of those safety enhancements would come in the form of what I would call capital improvements. Okay? So whether it be, you know, the hardening of a facility, whether it be making sure that we have the correct type of, you know, perimeter fencing around buildings, glass, I mean, whatever that may be, those would be sacred within that tech/safety levy. Because in essence, it could be, yep, software, yep, absolutely. It gives you a lot more flexibility. The only thing you cannot pay for out of a tech/safety levy is safety personnel. So you cannot pay for that. So you can't pay for technology personnel out of it, just like we're doing currently right now. That wouldn't change.
So really, the safety is going to be in both?
It would, yeah. In theory, it could be in both. Yes, yes. But it would give you flexibility, and really kind of give you more of a defined, I guess you'd say, chunk of money to, again, if you want to do building enhancements that are related to safety.
You want a detector in or something, and then that would be in the tech safety side, and then the personnel's in the other levy?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it's a good way to capture that, because again, if we did not try to capture it here, we could capture it in EPNO, but it kind of comes with limitations to a certain extent, more than the EPNO. So it's better to place it in a tech/safety levy. And the good thing is, if for whatever reason, okay, if for whatever reason AV doesn't do what we expect it to do, we don't have to collect that full amount, okay, to keep the tax rate in the ballpark of $3. So if we wanted to collect $10 million this year, and $9 million that year, or whatever, we have the flexibility to do that. Okay? Yeah. So this is also assuming our LEA is flat at $16.5 million. Obviously, I don't expect that to happen. The only thing that worries me is our LEA, as you all know, is completely formulated by student enrollment and also AV that we are not in control of, you know? So in order to protect us from a financial projection standpoint, I would advise we just assume that that dollar amount is going to stay the same. And it most likely will not. But that gives us, again, some flexibility, instead of projecting, oh, we think LEA is going to go up to $18 million. But again, that's not in our control, if that makes sense. So just a better way to play your cards. So... So, yeah. So one thing I do want to highlight is, as you all know, statutorily, we can levy at the max at $2.50. So this last line down here highlights the responsibility of this board, and obviously, previous boards, that obviously, the KSD board has done a great job on never even coming close to the maximum amount. So in theory, again, based upon that AV calculation, we could statutorily ask for $42.5, just in EPNO. In our first year, of course, we're not. We're proposing a $29.5. Same thing in 2028. As you can see, it's a difference of about $13 million. Same thing in 2029, and of course, consequently, the same thing roughly in about 2030. So roughly between $12 and $15 million in levy, we are not putting that burden on our taxpayers, when statutorily we could. Because again, you know, we're asking for what we need, not what we want. So as far as putting those dollars back in those categorical buckets, what I wanted to show you, and again, there's flexibility here. Basically, what I just did was I just took that sum of that difference, and I took that percentage difference, and I just applied it as this is my baseline. So again, I don't want anybody to get fixated that, oh my gosh, we're going to spend $18 million in student learning and staffing. That may go up, that may go down, but obviously, that would cause the next line to be adjusted, and the next line to be adjusted, and so on and so forth. But this total sum down here, this $54.5, for what we would get from the previous slide, as you can see, is exactly the same. Okay? Again, we just have flexibility here. So one of the things I do want to highlight, even though we are trying to get back to that $3 range, we are increasing, obviously, what we're asking in both EPNO and also tech and safety. We're still, again, even if you do that, because of the compounding factor with expenses versus what we potentially get in revenues from the state, and again, this is assuming a flat enrollment number, and then also possibly some unforeseen federal changes, as far as, again, what we receive in our title funding, and LAP, and also in sped, we're still projecting to possibly be about a negative $7 million to possibly $17 million four years out. I mean, obviously, that $17 million, that's hard to predict, because again, it's four years away. But even still, it doesn't give us exactly a balanced budget, which as you all know, obviously, I'm in my first year and a half, we can manage that, and we will manage that. And as we said from the get-go, we, needless to say, we're never, in our control, never going to purposely go on deficit financing. So...
No, I think that's important to see, because Dr. Brilhart's put in a really good plan together here, but it also gives us a fiduciary responsibility to know that we will have to make some choices based on this, at the same time being responsive to our taxpayers and our constituents. So to me, it's a balanced approach of getting what we believe, again, are the dollars that we need, knowing that potentially, hopefully our LEA goes up to shrink the gap. So we're being very conservative in that particular number. I feel confident in the approach that we're having here, that we not only have the dollars that we need, but also we have the ability to manage those categorically. Because I'm not going to tell you, I won't be in front of you asking for a $17 million deficit budget. That's not going to happen. Right? Having said that, the idea is that we know that with this particular plan, that that's a potential, and you want to prepare for like the worst-case scenario, and that you can work back from that. As well as the federal dollars, that's been explained here. And I'll get into more of that as we get going, but there's, you saw, it's a $30 million piece. So again, those are services that are available to our students, and they're student-driven. So if that comes a part of the conversation, at least we have some ability to, some flexibility to do that. By creating the tech/safety levy model, it creates greater flexibility to respond. So I appreciate the approach there, and that work that Dr. Brilhart has done.
Thank you. So this next slide, kind of similar to the previous slide, if we just took that modest approach. So if you remember, we still, we had that larger spending gap between, again, what we get from the state and what we have to raise locally. So this approach, if we, again, if we try to target that $3 rate, okay, assuming our AV does what we think it'll do, as you can see, that funding gap, while it's still there, it's a lot less dramatic than that gap. And as Mr. Hanson alluded to, we obviously will never come to the board and say, hey, we expect to have a $17 million deficit. That is on us to manage, and we will do that. But I just wanted to show you mathematically, again, if we don't manage it, what could be the potential. So, but again, that is on us to do that. So again, to kind of wrap up this presentation, again, going back to the mission and vision, ultimately, why are we here? We're here, again, to provide kids with opportunities. We're here to provide kids a safe environment. We're here for kids to feel good, and be known, and be valued while they're at school. And of course, obviously, also commit to fulfilling community expectations, and ultimately, meeting the needs of our kids, which of course, come a very wide swath. So this is for informational purposes. So what I wanted to do was highlight the fact that how responsible, again, this board has been traditionally in comparison to some of our contiguous neighbors. And again, these are factual numbers. I didn't make this up. This came straight from OSPI. So this number right here, this column right here, represents how much local levy dollars per FTE are raised with every single school district. And as you can see, Kennewick is at the top of the list for a reason, because we are by far the lowest in comparison to our contiguous neighbors. And if you shift your attention to this column here, again, this is our 2025, I couldn't find the 2026 EPNO rates, because again, assessed value's still out there. So I had to go with 2025. So our 2025 EPNO rate, as you can tell, we're at the top of the list categorically in that item as well. Again, not even, I think, the closest is within 16% of us. So I mean, that is to be applauded by this board, obviously, my predecessor as well, that, again, we've obviously been very fiscally solvent, and we've obviously, again, addressed needs, but not technically wants. And that's obviously good, good for everybody. So again, just to wrap up here real quick, important dates, obviously, as Mr. Hanson alluded to, November 12th, we will be asking for a resolution to be passed by the board, which will have all the finite details in it, of what exactly we are asking taxpayers to support come February. And of course, the big date is February 10th. So to kind of circle us up in a conversation, these are kind of the big hitters that Mr. Hanson and I need to know, a direction from the board of where we want to go, what we want to try to see. One of the biggest questions is, do we want to go for a one, two, three, or four-year levy? Do we want to maintain what we currently have, or do we want to build capacity for enhancements? And then also, do we want to keep with the traditional tech levy, or do we want to go with the proposed tech/safety levy? And then again, is that target of that, roughly that $3 range, something that we want to try to adhere to, and kind of be our guiding light, if you will? So with any further ado, we shall discuss.
Tom, question for you. So one of the reasons we lost some of our LEA money is because we didn't hit the threshold for, because I think the state said we had to tax at least $1.60 or something like that, in order to get the full LEA number. As we go forward, what is that number? Are we assuming, are you assuming it's still going to be 1.6?
So the threshold right now, we have to levy a buck fifty.
Dollar fifty.
Dollar fifty. It'd be right there. We have to levy at least $1.50 in order for us not to lose LEA funding. It's a theoretical argument, but the state technically will penalize you and not release state money to you that they have in their coffers if you don't stay above that $1.50 tax rate with your EPNO.
Right. Because we missed that, because a couple of years ago, the rates jumped, we got dinged on the LEA.
Yeah. So that's why it's so critical to know when your parcels are being assessed. And again, is it going to be 5%, is it going to be 4% going through, you know, don't know. And again, it's all economy-driven, we know that. But knowing when the majority of your parcels are going to be reassessed up to market value gives you your best guess at that point. So, but yeah, I would, you know, having that, I think it was 22% increase that one particular year, I mean, that's an anomaly. Yeah. So I think I presented this back in June. So if you take out 2021 and 2022, the average five-year AV growth for KSD, again, if you take those two years out, is right around 8%, right around that. So estimating four and five, I think that's pretty safe. So, but, yeah. Yeah, it's a very good question.
Well, I think, and when you look at the rate, like at $1.71, it sounds like, why are you so far away from the $1.50? That's the explanation. Because if your growing AV grows greater than the 4%, our rate will actually go down. So we want to make sure that we're not sitting there to lose, we don't want to leave any money on the table. And we have, we've run different scenarios when we were putting this together, multiple scenarios. There is a calculator on OSPI, and you're giving it projections of enrollment, market value, and we ran it multiple times. giving projections of enrollment, market value, and we ran it multiple times, and I wanted to ensure that we weren't, like, teetering, at the same time not jumping, right? So that's the bounce, and we feel this is the sweet spot.
Yeah, that's a question I had along those lines, is while we did have those anomalies a couple of years ago, I remember those weren't the only anomalies. If I remember correctly, there were a couple of times, and then a little further past it, it had jumped, like, eleven percent. If it were to jump eleven percent here, what was the impact? I mean, let's say the decrease, the interest rates decreased significantly, increasing property values. How would that, have we calculated that in?
I'd have to do the math on it, and I can get back with you on that. So.
Part of it is, what I guess I'm trying to get at is, how much Christian are we giving ourselves? Because, let's look at, yeah, twenty, probably the twenty percent was an anomaly that's not going to happen again, but I think it's not unreasonable to think, hey, we have a ten percent year, because we may have had some slower years.
I would agree, and I think this is districts all across, not only in this state, but other states, do the same similar thing, is you're trying to project that piece based on historical data, and then when you have outliers, I think that another consideration would be on the opposite side of that, in the event that, let's say, the government shutdown continues, and folks in our communities, let's say, will lose two thousand jobs on next Friday, that potentially could impact our market value in the opposite. We have maybe a flood of homes on the market. So, I think, the question, though, is like, what is our, like, the sweet spot? And have we considered anything like an outside? The other thing is that typically, even in an AV bump, it's not sustained. It's typically a big jump, and you're right, interest rates are a high part of that, and inventory.
So, if our current preliminary AV grew eleven percent from twenty-six to twenty-seven, the buck fifty threshold would be about twenty-seven million by twenty-seven four.
So we're still okay?
Yeah, because we're at about a two-million-dollar bump.
Yeah, it's a pretty good question.
The other question, if you could go back to the next slide, where it shows us compared to others?
Oh, yep.
So, I love the fact that we are significantly lower than essentially everybody. It looks like, once we get up, we'll be closer to Prosser and Finley, but still much lower than the people there. The one question I have is, are there any programs or activities that we are significantly lacking compared to our counterparts that are not covered in our levy? Are we, is there something that we don't have, that for an extra five cents we could give, that we don't have, that would make us more competitive when looking at Richland and Pasco particularly? Does that make sense?
No, that's a great question, because you could take the opposite approach and say, now, wait a second, are we underserving compared to our?
And that's what I'm saying. Are there programs that we do not have, that if we added five cents to the levy, we could suddenly say, we can add those programs, it would be a significant competitive advantage? For example, I'm going to use one I know, is that classically, I know, I have friends whose kids go to another high school, go to the Richland School District, because they feel like the AP classes that are offered and some of the art program, arts, are much better over there than in our district. So is that the case? I don't know if that's actually the case, but if it is the case, I mean, adding five cents, we could increase the number of AP classes offered and improve our arts programs. Our community may find that valuable.
Awesome. Because I think there's a question of quality and quantity are the two pieces there. And I would ask, you know, listen, I know she's listening, right off the top of my head, I don't necessarily know or nor feel that we don't have the same level of offerings, as for example, as the Richland School District and/or Pasco. I know that our school districts are different demographically. I mean, that's definitely. Melissa, can you think of anything, like, right off the top of your head, like, hey, this is what they would have? I can tell you that, talking to the other superintendents, they're envious of our staffing levels, just to be blunt. Meaning, they feel like we're, without speaking for them, like, maybe we're right-sized based on our student population, with the level of, the number of staff that we have. Well, I think the idea is, again, you want to make sure that you have what I would call, and I put them in three categories to make it very simple. We want to make sure that we have all the opportunities to make sure that our kids are well-prepared for success in work, life, and post-secondary. So, to me, that's opportunities. Career technical programs, we have K-Tech that actually pulls some of that off, but also other things with APIIB and/or the arts, everything that would provide that student an opportunity to take their next steps. That's one. Also, would be the support component. Supports would be, we can get into the safety thing, for example. Safety is prevention, right? Like, do we have the opportunity to address students who may be exhibiting behaviors that could lead to a situation anyway? So do we have supports in that way, counseling services in all our elementarys, for example? Do we have that? I believe that the way that we've put this, we're going to be able to augment, enhance services without breaking the bank, right? And I want our constituents to know that, and I'll get into this a little bit later in the board meeting, with our study, our work group, our safety work, our community work group, because if they come back with something that's like, hey, we need to do X, and that's a value and expectation that our community would support, then I would recommend it to the board. So, right off the top of my head, I don't.
And if we could maybe just look and make sure that there's nothing that, again, I think we're substantially lower than pretty much everybody else, and which I want, I want to maintain that, but at the same time, let's make sure that we're not missing out on, like you said, we're not underserving, because we want to stay low.
What's the difference in total value for every, you know, off the top of your head, like, if you go up a nickel on every one, like, does that, what's the value that brings to it? For instance, I think one-seventy-one, one-seventy-four, seventy, seventy-four?
Yeah. So, to answer it more simplistically, I'll have to do some math on the nickel part. So, right now, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and I'm speaking very general here, okay, the average residential home in Kennewick School District proper is valued at roughly about four hundred thousand dollars, roughly. That includes everything, whether it be an apartment, condo, single-family home, whatever, about four hundred thousand. So, if AV does what we think it'll do at three dollars and three cents, they're paying roughly about eleven hundred dollars for that three bucks, okay? And if AV grows, obviously, the value of that four-hundred-thousand-dollar house is going to compound and grow subsequently. So by year end, by twenty-thirty, if we stay roughly around that three-dollar range, that same homeowner that five years prior was paying eleven hundred dollars, will be paying about twelve hundred, maybe twelve hundred and fifty. It's not, that's over five years. Obviously, it grows every year, because their AV is going up every year.
That's assuming we're not adding anything to the market.
Yes.
Anyone listening to think that?
And that's assuming that single homeowner doesn't do any enhancements to their house. You know, that's just, as is, comparison to apples to apples.
To Josh's question, so FY twenty-seven, if the rate was a dollar seventy-five, is that only thirty million in EPO, or is that thirty-three million? Like, what's the significance in that?
Four cents.
That's what I'm saying. Like, if we add a nickel, does that add three million dollars to our coffers? And from a perspective of a homeowner, it will cost them another twenty bucks or fifty bucks. And again, to me, we can save a homeowner fifty bucks, great, but I think if we have certain programs that are particularly, that are particularly important to Lance's point, we're missing something here. I think a lot of homeowners, if it were something very, for example, I know this is like our safety offices, I think most of us would be saying, hey, I'm okay paying an extra ten bucks a year, make sure that all our elementary schools are safe. So that's why I'm wanting to know, what is the impact?
So, for, again, fiscal year twenty-seven, I'm going to click here. So for this fiscal year, if our AV, which our AV is right now, it's going to be about sixteen-point-five billion. So assuming it goes up about four percent, five cents in fiscal year twenty-seven would yield about nine hundred thousand. So, about five cents, yeah. So.
Say that again?
Five cents would yield about nine hundred thousand. No, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, Tom, I need some clarification here. I'm missing something. So, as I'm looking at our tax rate, we've got our EPNO at a dollar seventy-one in fiscal year twenty-seven, tech-safety at fifty cents, and then we say our tax rate is three dollars. And so I come up with, you know, two thirty-one. Where's our other sixty-nine cents?
Debt service.
Oh, debt, okay. Well, okay. Well, then on this, we should have put a number of the debt service on there. I assumed that's what it was, but I just didn't see the amount.
Very good question.
Yeah, and we had that, you're right. We had that on the previous slide, but you're right. The most important thing is that I want the community to know that we're not asking them for forty million, fifty million, right? Like, we're asking them for twenty-nine and the eight, it's thirty-seven. Because that's what's tricky, because we're gaining the other piece, because it is a forty-X-million-dollar levy. That's not the ask. That's not the ask.
To your point, Mike, I'll add that information just underneath these boxes, just so that's easy. But again, the thing I do want to point out is, this does not include state tax one and two, because, again, that's not in our control.
Totally fine. We want to deal with what we control.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, one more time, can we go back to the one comparing our neighbors?
Yep. Oops.
Do we have, this is just the EPNO, do we have the total, like, we're talking about our cumulative EPNO plus tech being three dollars? Do we know what the cumulative our neighbors is?
I can get that, yeah.
Again, part of what I just, like, we've talked about, going to the community, saying, look, we're less than, you know, we're lower than the surrounding areas, but we are lean and lean, we're not missing anything, we just are not wasteful, we are very careful with it. I think it makes it, it makes it easier for our, it makes it easier for the people in our city to realize, wait a second, you know, we're being very, very efficient, and we're trying to do the best for our kids.
I would argue we have more. We're offering more, because we're, the safety officers, we're offering, potentially expanding our safety technology, or?
Right.
So I would say we're actually offering a lot more for less.
We're being more efficient with our dollars. And again, what I want to make sure, though, is that, let's just use Prosser, for example, they're one-seventy-five, but let's say their tech levy's twenty-five cents. Now, yeah, we get really good in one area, it may just be that we're moving money from one place to another.
Sure, yeah, we can get that.
It's probably hard to compare anyone outside of Richland and Pasco, honestly, because those school districts.
So much smaller.
Prosser is, yeah.
Yeah, they're a fraction of our size. But particularly, I'm looking at Richland and Pasco and saying, okay, how do we compare with the tech and EPNO?
And we're going to find out next month, because I would imagine everybody on this list is probably running a levy, so they're going to, it's going to need public what they're running out to.
And KiB is running one now, so that's going to be first, and then most of the people on our superintendent call were running one in February. The big three are, and I know the ask on the Richland is two dollars and fifty cents. So, you know what I mean? So even, because right now, we're a dollar fifty-one, we're going to ask for a dollar seventy-four. So there's just gone from two-ten to two-fifty. Regardless, probably relatively speaking, it's going to be in alignment. And I don't know, like, Pasco just sold bonds, and so their debt service is going to go up for their new high school that they just, and I don't know when that rolls onto their books. But that's something that we definitely could push out, as far as information, that we can make sure that our community understands.
They understand, and what we know is the cumulative, kind of what we've done, which I love, is saying, hey, here's the cumulative debt that we can control, or cumulative tax that we can control. Here's what your total is, here's what we're trying to achieve, we're trying to keep it at three dollars. That's our goal here, and if we can compare that, especially if we're looking at our counterparts in our community, and they're all at four plus, that's a significant difference. But again, I would ask, when you say Richland's going up to two-fifty, my question is, is what are they doing with all their money now?
So, I wondered about that, too. So, because their AV per student is so high in comparison to ours, because they have a lot more commercial, you know, and just higher residential, I guess, and, you know, per FTE, their LEA amount that they receive is less per pupil than what we receive. So they, I mean, don't get me wrong, they're still asking a lot more than what we would need to, of course, even if it was a comparison. But that's one of the arguments, I guess you could say. So, yeah, yeah. It's a good question.
The one thing I'm curious about, and this is one task that I had for the levy, and I don't know how these guys feel, or, Brittany, are you still online?
I am, yes.
Okay, all right, just a second. We are about, correct me if I'm wrong, we are about eight or nine nurses short in the district, having one nurse in each school. Would we be able to absorb that, or would we need to, based on this rate, or is that feasible? Or, I just think that's, and I could be way off here, but I think having a nurse in each school, I think the community could definitely get behind that. I think people would, but I don't know, maybe. I guess what I'm asking is, is this something that could support that, or is that something where we would say, well, no, we need, we would have to go up five cents or ten cents to support that, and then which, in that case?
Yeah, I'd just use rough numbers, and Tom would have this as well, but let's just say we're adding eight FTE to our FTE, that would be about one-point-two-ish?
Yep.
Okay? And as you can see, we have, just in the health and safety component, we have about, like, yeah, because we're over three.
So you're going from about a million increase in that category. So, yeah.
Plus, our LEA is going to bump, so we could pick that up, even if we do, if we, when we pull this off, our LEA would be able to just support that. So, we can do a modest increase, LEA picks up the balance. And short answer is, I believe the answer is yes.
And again, I wouldn't get too fixated on these, because there's flexibility there. So, yeah, based upon need and, so, yeah.
And again, you're going to have a report that's going to come your way from our community safety group, and embedded that might fold into the nursing component as well.
As long as it's an option. This is what you need to know.
This is what we need to know. Yes, sir.
We need direction, so that we can put a resolution together for you. So remember, we're not taking action right now. We just need direction.
I love the tech-safety idea. I love the tech-safety idea. I think that's really savvy. I like that. And I think, I like the four-year, honestly. I think that this is a great plan, and I think the people are going to get behind it. And I mean, four-years is so much better than two, right? It's nice to have that breathing room.
And I would say that the consideration on the board would be what I would classify as voter fatigue. So four-years would give us greater stability, and you're not going frequently back to the community. The unintended thing would be, you know, we get some anomalies, that would be the only thing. And I feel more confident in that approach, as far as that not happening, than I would be going every other year, or, and I would say, historically, this board has adopted four-year levies, and everyone around us is going to do a four-year levy, so it's going to be in alignment. It was an anomaly to do the three-year. Am I correct in that, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you wanted a recommendation from me, that would be the direction I, but I work at the pleasure of the board.
What was the thought process behind going for a three-year levy?
I don't know.
Oh, that's right.
I think sometimes when you, if you're unsuccessful with your community, I think what's important is you have to change something. Others, they just think you're jamming the same thing out of them.
It was COVID, the failed levy.
I think you need to be responsive, and that's sometimes that happens with bonds, other types of funding mechanisms. If you keep giving them the same option, they're going to say, we're going to keep giving you the same result. That would be a guess on my part, but that's historically what you would do.
There was also the cycle of the levies anyways, right? So if you're going every four years, one fails this year, cut it down to three to continue on the same cycle as well.
Yeah, I think four would be great. It's, part of what I think is not just voter fatigue, but this takes a lot of time and energy from the community, from.
The staff.
The staff, people here. We can minimize the amount of impact and, and that way we can focus more on academics and things that need to get done. That would be great. In terms of maintain versus enhance, I think from my perspective, the enhancement of the program that you've set up, I think looks good. It's, it's forward thinking, it's conservative and yet provides us cushioning. The only thing I might change in the tech levy and versus safety tech levy, I actually probably would put safety first. I think people feel stronger about safety than they do about technology in terms of their kids and, and, but so saying safety and tech levy from a, just a marketing perspective might resonate a little bit more because people.
That's good.
Good point.
And then I think the target of $3, I, I like that because it gives people an idea that we're not just trying to continually gouge them, but that we're trying to maintain a steady state, particularly if we, like I said, I'd like to see comparisons towards our, our counterparts.
So really quick, regarding the tech levy, my only concern about changing it to a safety and tech levy is that for how, you know, how many years they've been supporting a tech levy. And so my concern as well is when you go to the voters and say, hey, we want, now we want something different, the thing is, well, what is this? What's, what's, so, because the, the tech levy passed the first time, that there was no issue with that on the, on that, on the first round. The EPNO is what we had issue with. The other thing too, again, four years, I, I'm all for a four-year levy, it's, it's easier for everyone around. But again, I just want to make sure we're all really, really focused on the fact that, you know, we're asking people for more money. And, and so we need to be wildly, wildly attentive to the fact that, you know, we're asking for more dough and it's not just us, it's the state. Everywhere we go, we're getting taxed, 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 every time we turn around. So we need to do whatever we need, you know, I'm, I'm all about, you know, maintaining, yes, we need to ask for more, but we need to be hypersensitive about what we're asking for. So it's, whenever one, I, I think this economy is going south and if we're asking people to pay more money, I, I just, I just don't want to run into other buzzsaw because that was not fun.
I, I think, and that, that's why I guess I like the target of $3, because I agree, it, it's one of those things, it's a constant frustration where every time you turn around, it looks like somebody's, particularly the government is trying to take more from you.
Right.
And, and I think a lot of the community is, has, has tax fatigue. And so if we can say, hey, look, one, we're the lowest in the area, we, we have the lowest tax rate of any of the other three major cities, even our outliers, even these smaller ones, we can be significantly lower than them, we're the lowest in the area, we have a plan to, to not significantly raise our tax rates, it's going to stay around $3, that to me is a, is a much easier sell. And just because exactly like you said, the fact is, is even if the economy, whether the economy is good or bad, the fact is, is when every time you go, you feel like you're getting taxed more and more and more, it, it becomes burdensome.
Yeah, so it's, it's, and again, this is a, you know, the messaging here is going to be key. We want to make sure that whatever we do is saying, look, we're doing the best we can with the least amount of money. So, and, but again, it's going to cost more, you know, there's no two ways about it, we're going to have to ask for, there's going to have to be an increase.
And I would say another way to lessen the burden of our community is to make sure that our district is a destination district for children. That means they enroll in our schools and the way we get them to enroll in our schools is make sure that they're safe. So these things, like to me, it's almost an investment and it creates greater opportunities for development because we're going to have families who are going to choose us, that means they're going to build homes with us. Then that reduces the burden, keeping the dollars coming in the same or even augment. So point taken and that would be our goal, I mean, big picture, that's our goal. We want our families to choose us, we have an obligation to ensure that our kids are safe and that they're provided the opportunities to meet the mission vision. So point taken.
And if you go back to that other slide where it talks about where all this money goes to, to your point, a, a lot of what makes a district a destination district is some of this stuff, it's the athletic and activities, it's the extracurricular or the, the curricular stuff that is above and beyond, whether it's special education or your, your higher, your AP, your, your IB, that's the things that are going to draw, draw people into the district. Because those are the people that are willing to move and shift to find those people, people that are interested in good athletic programs and good arts programs, good extracurricular.
Good reading programs.
Good reading programs.
Good science.
Yes, the, the whole, so, and safety.
Ms. Gladhill, any comments or any questions before we?
No, I mean, I agree that I think a four, I wouldn't want to do anything shorter than a three-year levy. I'm, I think I'm more in favor of the four-year levy just to reduce that tax burden or at least the, the tax exhaustion of the, of the taxpayers. I like Josh's idea of switching it to a safety tech levy just for marketing purposes because yes, we have families out there that will move for specialized programs or enhanced programs, et cetera, but every family wants a school district that is strong in safety and we've seen that recently in our district, we're still dealing with that in our district. And I mean, I recognize I'm coming from, everyone understands my bias already, but I, I mean, if we want to de-emphasize tech, I mean, I know that's important and we need it there and I'm not asking us to get rid of any of our tech, let's replace it and keep it strong and healthy, but I love this move of combining it with safety and emphasizing that, because I think that will have a larger draw than anything else we can do with the levy.
I have a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. So everybody knows that we have resource officers, that's a known thing, right? So, and this EPNO, the EPNO is where the safety resource officers are, are, right? So we call this the, the tech and safety. Do people say, oh, well, that's where the resource officers are just because it says safety in there and then let's vote yes on this one, let's not vote yes on the other one like last time? And that would be my only thought of maybe, and you, the EPNO levy, you can't say EPNO and safety, you can't, I mean, can you change the name of it? Because they're both safety.
I think it's just EPNO, yeah.
So, so is that, is that misleading people in a way unintentionally, like, oh, well, that's where the safety officers are, here's the safety.
You're right, and that was part of our discussion, making sure that, I guess the easiest way to say it is that our enhancements when it comes to safety outside of personnel will land in the tech.
Right, but, 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 yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm saying just, just selling it, are people going to think, you see, you see what I'm saying? Are people going to think all of a sudden that like, oh, well.
So, so tho- those descriptions will be laid out in the resolution. Now granted, not too many people read the resolutions, but, but that's on us to formulate the message, to make it clear in a short, short paragraph that this is what it's funding.
Also that it gives us the spending of.
But I understand what Mike is saying, Mike is, Mike is asking, is it, is that what we're legally required to call it? Can we only call it an EPNO levy or can we, can we put safety into that burden or does it have to strictly be only EPNO?
So to, to my knowledge, Brittany, it has to be called EPNO, but I will double check with our, our bond council and check on that.
EPNO, safety, tech, safety.
Yeah, yeah, everything's safety.
Either way, it comes down, I mean, it comes down to how we message and communicate and, and as, as transparent. I, I would just say I'm, I'm, I'm all for the four-year. I, I think we also have to remember too, that it, it's not free to put anything on, you know, we have to pay for it, right? So if we're doing a two-year, we'd pay, we'd be paying every two years, however it works. So I'm, I think the four-year is probably the best option, it sounds like.
That's. So I feel like I have direction from the board and the two things that I heard pretty saliently was the duration, enhancements, actually three, and then to keep the target rate what's been proposed. Those are the kind of the three things. And then the marketing piece we can, because we have some additional community members that would really be helpful in that as well, because we need larger tentacles when we're communicating. The most important thing is it's simple and understandable and that's why, I don't want to create confusion, that's what I'm hearing from Mike, so thank you for that.
The only thing I would add to that is if you get significant pushback from any of the community members that are giving feedback on any of those things we just talked about, I'd love to hear that before.
I'll make sure that the board has good information prior to the November vote on the resolution.
Any other questions before we wrap up? All right, I will adjourn our study session. Thank you.